I'd like to call the February 10th, 2020 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connelly. I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Monica Daniels for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with pure hearts, asking for your protection over our city. We pray for unity and wisdom as we make decisions that affect both the young and the old. As we go forth tonight, we ask that every heart be open and every voice be heard. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Connelly.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Smiling.
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield. Councilmember Meyerhopper.
I am here.
Mayor Connelly, we have a call.
All right, thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
No, Mayor, I have no changes.
All right.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. All right, we'll move on to the public comment period. Public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated, with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Barbara Gladhorn.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. My name is Barbara Gladhorn. I'm a resident of Cypress Glen. I want to commend you for including "Growing Green and Clean City" in the proposals that you made in your planning agenda in January. I'm a member of Cypress Glen Sustainability Committee and resident council, and one of the things we're aware of is that seniors who are looking to retire to a continuing care community are looking for green communities and also for green cities in which those communities reside. My academic background is in anthropology, and from that perspective, one of the things that's very clear and amazing about human beings is that we're the only species in existence that can live anywhere on the planet. Every other living creature, species, has to have an ecological niche in which to live, where they find everything that they need to survive. What we're finding now is that the ecological niche which our ingenuity has provided for us across the planet is diminishing. We have concerns about eroding coastline, about estuaries that are polluted with seawater and floodwaters. So instead of continuing to expand our horizons, our horizons are diminishing. So again, I thank you for your decision to work toward a green and clean city that will remain sustainable, in which residents can live and thrive. And as a member of the Greenville EAC Subcommittee on Emissions, I ask you to take the next step in that direction, to create within city government an Office of Sustainability, staffed by professionals, who will lead and coordinate efforts to reduce Greenville's footprint and initiate your goal to grow a clean and green city. Thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gladhorn. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Rufus Huggins. And Charles Bedder will be accompanying him.
Mayor PJ Connelly, Mayor Pro Tem Rosa Glover, other members of the Greenville City Council and staff, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Rufus Huggins. I'm the post adjutant for Post 160 located here in Greenville. And standing beside us is the district service officer who is with Post 39. This is a unique time within our city, but first I'd like to commend all of you for the tremendous amount of positive growth that you have done in this city. You have really led us into 2020 like never before, and I thank you for that. I really do, each one of you, because you got to work together and it took a team, and I appreciate that also. But we've got a problem in Greenville that's not unique, and it is a problem helping our veterans. And before I go any further, I'd like to ask my commander, Commander Curtis Best, if he would stand, please. And if I were to ask the other members of the American Legion, would they please stand? These brothers from the American Legion from all over eastern Carolina, and we come here with a common cause, and that's to help our disabled veterans. And we got lucky. We found a guy that everybody called Red, but his name is Charlie Braddock, but everyone called him Red. That's what he addressed to him. And he began to help the veterans in this area, and he has done a unique thing. And if any of you from the veteran, you know how hard it is to get a claim passed. It could take years. He has gotten them to come to Greenville, North Carolina, unheard of, unheard of, but they're coming. And they're going to be filling out claims and things here in Greenville. And we're expecting in excess of 15,000 people to come in during this time, which is going to be a tremendous boost to our economy, not to even mention the attention it's going to bring to Greenville. And what we're doing here is for our veterans, because as you know, they're the foundation of this country. But I would talk forever. I told Red, I said, "Hunch me when you want me to shut up." He said, "Just talk on." But what we're doing, I guess I'm going to make sure to pass out to all you got there, right?
Yes, sir.
If you look at it, you'll see the partnerships that we're forming to help pull this event off, because it's going to take a tremendous amount of partnership. And we've got some strong partnerships, and we want the city to be one of those partners. We know that this is the first time here on this to talk about this, but we feel that we can find some avenue or some way that the city can help us also. As a matter of fact, I know there's a way, because I know you all. I know every one of you, and I know that you will find it. But I'm going to shut up and then pass it over to my comrade. If you have any questions, I'm going to let him answer all the questions.
Okay, good evening. I am the vice district commander of District 3 of the American Legion. I'm also a service officer with the American Legion and the DAV and the AMVETS. We have this VAC. We call it VAC because it's the Veterans Experience Action Network. What happens is the VA comes down with their service officers and their judiciaries. They can come in and adjudicate a claim right there on the spot. What we have in this area, even in eastern North Carolina, is a lot of veterans that don't even know what they can get. And all these people will be coming into Greenville here, and we do our claims. The problem is, we have, there was one of these done in Cary for the last four years. The third year, they had a council because of a storm. In Cary, the first year, they had 580 vets from seven states. The second year, in 2017, they had 1,083 people from 10 states. This last year, they had 11,000 people come in from 14 different states besides North Carolina. This economic boom will be great for this state, this city, and this area, because we'll bring people from all over eastern North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, Virginia. In fact, last year, Cary had people coming from Cary, from California. This is the only state that holds these VACs so far. They're trying to get them into the other states. But we have members of the DAV, the Veterans of Modern Warfare, the Vietnam Veterans of America, the Fleet Reserves, the Marine Corps League. I represent it here. We would like your partnership with this, so we can take care of our veterans. Our veterans, they stood up for us, so now we have to stand up for them. And any way you can help us, because we have a commitment, we have a thing for $5,900 with the convention center. It's hard to raise it. But we also have to have security, and they like police officers there. The VA or the VBA, that's the one that does the claims, will not come without the security. And we're trying to get funds in security here, so we can help these veterans and the homeless veterans that's on the streets. I know about being on the streets. I've been on the streets for two years. I was on the streets in West Virginia, and it's a lot colder up there than what it is down here. But there's people here that need our help, and we need to help them.
You have the package that we passed out to every council member, the mayor pro tem and the mayor, and on that, it has the, yeah, on that sheet there, at the bottom of it, you have the information on the contact.
Yeah. You got the wrong one.
Okay, we had to change the date. So the correct date there is the 20th to the 22nd of May that we will be there, and we're hoping that we can come in and, Mayor, maybe talk to you or the mayor pro tem, and see what we can begin to do, where we can receive some assistance or partnership from the city of Greenville. Or do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, no.
Thank you both for bringing this to our attention. I'd like to direct city staff to do whatever they can possible to help partner with you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huggins. Thank you, Mr. Bedder, and thank you to everyone here that has served our country.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Abigail Yoon.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you for letting me speak here today. My name is Abby Yoon, and I'm currently a junior at DH Connelly High School. I also help manage the community garden here in Greenville. And if you aren't already familiar with our community garden, it's located near ECU and it was adopted in 2017. Since the garden was adopted, we have recruited nearly 10,000 youth in Greenville to help with our garden. So since then, our garden has recruited youth that range from seven-year-olds and to senior citizens from local senior centers, and they help come and grow and harvest vegetables. And in turn, their efforts benefit our city, because the fresh produce is donated to local families in need that are struggling with food insecurity in our city. As of now, our city has, or our garden has provided over 400 food insecure families and students in Pitt County with access to healthy nutritious food. And our hope is that their financial situations will not block them from having basic needs like healthy food. I would like to note that our impact has left on, the impact that our garden has left on hundreds of families and youth have only been because of the support of our community. In my role leading the garden, I work alongside several community partners, including ECU Sustainability Coordinator Chad Carwin. The university sustainability coordinator has dedicated his time and efforts to developing our garden into a safe fruitful place that it is now. He has coordinated and maintained sustainable practices for our garden, which range from composting food waste into soil to eliminating pesticide use. He has helped, most importantly, Greenville sustain its image as a green community. The influence of Chad Carwin and his role as community organizer and sustainability manager has been instrumental not only in our garden, but also throughout our entire region. Adding a full-time sustainability officer will serve to strengthen the link between residents, students, and surrounding areas. I fully support and back a proposal to add this position, and I also represent the entire organization of Love is a Turtle. It is my hope that we can all help to keep the green in Greenville. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yoon. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Jake Hochar.
Mayor Connelly and city council members.
Good evening.
My name is Jake Hochar. I'm an ECU professor of environmental economics. As an economist, we define sustainability as a path that grows our collective wealth of a community, our built infrastructure, our natural and cultural resources, and our human capital. The council's stated goals are to build a safe, thriving community that's green, healthy, resilient, and serves as an economic hub for eastern North Carolina with accessible infrastructure and transparent governance. The council's stated goal is therefore to be sustainable by prioritizing investments into the city's common interest, which are often difficult to evaluate using a common currency. I want to begin by applauding the city for their aggressive investments to modernize our stormwater infrastructure. I also want to applaud Greenville Utilities for their award-winning treatment of our drinking water and wastewater discharge. Greenville's also been recognized by the American Lung Association as one of the country's cleanest metropolitan areas for ozone and particle pollution. Greenville's not only an economic hub for the eastern part of our state, but it's also a responsible steward of our coastal plains' natural resources, by which, by many metrics of which are in peril. Two weeks ago, federal surface water protections were rolled back, and just today, the White House proposed a 25% cut to the U.S. EPA's budget. I'm here to encourage the hiring of a citywide sustainability manager, not only to identify our city's future conservation priorities, but also to measure the value of our current and past progress. During the low-flow season, 60% of the Tar River's volume is wastewater discharge from upstream communities, many of which don't undertake the expensive treatments of wastewater that Greenville Utilities does. This increases the cost to our community, but it's worth it to ensure a clean drinking water source for us and for our downstream neighbors. The Town Creek Culvert Project and future investments to unimpair Greens Mill Run increase our city's property values by reducing flood risk. Downstream, our city's efforts also increase recreational benefits, fisheries production, while reducing sediment loading, riverbank erosion, and the likelihood of toxic algal blooms. Again, this increases the cost to our community, but it's worth it for our own benefit and for that of our downstream neighbors. Our city's clean air increases workplace productivity, reduces school absences, increases property values that will attract businesses, residents, and retain employees. Reductions in our city's carbon footprint benefit the planet more broadly. It's worth it. The far-reaching benefits of our city's investments into our clean air and water spill over into our entire region. But many of these benefits are not being monitored, and what's not monitored can't be valued. During a time of federal rollbacks of environmental protections, a sustainability manager could ensure that Greenville remains a steward of our region's natural resources and is rewarded for that stewardship as a socially responsible destination for businesses and families. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Hochar. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
There are no additional speakers.
All right, anyone else who'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Anyway, good evening. My name is Ann Harrington. I'm the priest and pastor of Free Spirit Inclusive Catholic Community. I am here tonight to represent my community's commitment, and I would like you to support the proposal for the sustainability manager. And I thought I would bring you a prayer, but you can, you don't need to bow your head. You can just kind of hang with me while I say this. Mother Earth, you have been called many names. Gaia, Great Mother, Magna Mother, Earth Mother, Mother Goddess, Blue Planet. We see your suffering. We long to heal you. Mankind misunderstood our relation to you and used you and abused you, saw you as a resource to build empires and treasure. We are sorry, but we know these feelings are not enough. It is clear, we need to be the healers and builders and stewards of our renewed earth, a planet that will sustain and nourish all living beings. We are learning to recognize our intimate connection to the land, the air, the water. Our very being depends on harmonious relationship with you, our great dear mother. We pray our Greenville leaders be open to you, oh Creator God, by paving new paths of stewardship. Oh great Spirit, in you in whom we live and move and have our very being, we are awed that you made this wondrous universe out of the flame of your love. Kindle in us the passion to be your holy people. Amen. And I learned a long time ago that singing has twice the power of a spoken prayer. So now I'm going to sing a bit of a song. As one we walk this earth together, as one we sing to her our sacred song. As one we love her, as one we heal her. Her heart beats with our own as one. As one we join with her our mother. As one we feel her sacred song. As one we touch her, as one we heal her. Her heart beats with our own as one. And at this time, I'd like to ask everyone that's here that's supporting the Office of Sustainability to please stand up and show your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington. Any of you else that would like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Earl Trevathan. I think it's coming up.
Hi, thanks again. I'm Barney Kane, live in Greenville, and I'm here, of course, supporting a sustainability officer. A couple of points I want to make, following up on Jake's comment about how wonderful our water treatment plant is. Turns out that wonderful 20 or 30, $40 million plant, which is going to be expanded, provides us with the best drinking water tested every day that you could ever need. Interestingly enough, the price of that water is so cheap that for the price of one of those bottles that you guys are drinking out of right now, you can have 160 bottles of water. That's the cost ratio, and it's better water. And it interests me, the casual way, I too have drunk out of plastic bottles, heaven knows how many, but the casual way that we fall into consumptive wasteful patterns that wind up with plastic in the ocean, even if it says recyclable, and no matter what you pay for that bottle, even if you got it at Sam's Club for seven cents, you can still get 160 bottles of Greenville City water. And I remind you that, if you want to, if we just had a sustainability officer whose beating heart was to look at the ways that we every day fall into wasteful practices, we don't even notice it, and that would be a great benefit. If you think about it, in the Continental Congress, nobody had a plastic drinking water bottle, and look at the good they did, you know? Harry Truman never even saw one. Neither did John Kennedy. Dwight Eisenhower never saw one. So we don't really need plastic bottles, and there's drinking fountains all over the place, and the dumpster outside is full of them. So anyway, if you had a sustainability officer, that's just one tiny way that he would make a difference. Another way is I've been watching your workshops. It's amazing how much of the time you spend on traffic calming and managing roads and how much money we spend on that. And there's alternatives. Greenville alone, the residents of Greenville, generate between 400,000 and 500,000 tons of CO2 that's submitted to the air every year. And if we had better city design and management and less use of personal cars, we'd be a lot better off. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kane.
And watching those, I have to say, the jovial interaction you guys have in your workshops is a blessing. I see you guys are, no matter what the divisions are, you guys really work together well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got one more speaker, Mr. Earl Trevathan.
Mr. Mayor, the council, I appreciate this opportunity to say a few words urging you to support the proposals that you're hearing about now on the environmental commission on the mitigating greenhouse gases. I also want to acknowledge that Rosa Glover worked with me together for so many years, and I'm delighted to see she's been promoted.
Twenty-seven years with you.
Fifty-five years ago, I sat in one of your seats as a member of the city council. Our major issues at that time were focused on the future. Everything that came up, it seemed to be what tomorrow would bring. I've seen those 55 years go by and seen so many worthy things that were done with thoughtfulness for the council and improved this beautiful city. I remember we struggled with public housing, the Housing Authority, and Sherrill Island redevelopment, zoning of fraternities and sororities. This proposal is focused now on the future, but we have the present to consider, too. I am sure that there are millions of our citizens who are asking, "What can I do to reduce greenhouse gases?" And start with our cities. Our neighboring cities are underway, and we've read of their accomplishments and what's being done in Raleigh and Apex and Cary and Winston-Salem and Durham and Asheville and Charlotte, and I think Greenville is next to add to that list. I'm amazed at what this subcommittee has done in developing the proposals that have been before you. Dr. Ames and his supporters have spent months, meetings, research, consulting, working with the university to get where we are today. the university to get where we are today. We appreciate your diligence on this matter. I think much of the groundwork is done. Climate change is with us, and there's no doubting it. Do nothing about it is not a choice. Again, I thank you for letting us appear before you.
Thank you, Dr. Trevathan. Anyone else who'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have two minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda includes the following items: minutes from the January 6, 2020 city council workshop, and the January 6, 2020, and January 9, 2020 city council meetings. Item number two is a resolution accepting dedication of rights of way and easement for Blackwood Ridge Phase Two, Section One, Blackwood Ridge Phase Two, Section Two, Blackwood Ridge Phase Two, Section Three, Blackwood Ridge, Ridge Phase Two, Section Four, Mill Creek Subdivision Phase Two, and revisions of Lot 37 and 38 of Mill Creek Subdivision Phase One, as well as the Drake. Item number three is a reimbursement resolution for street pedestrian projects. Item number four is a resolution declaring certain property a surplus and authorizing conveyance without monetary consideration to the town of Bethel. And item number five, our various tax refunds greater than $100. The consent agenda, Mayor.
All right. Anyone want to pull any items from there?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion been made by Councilmember Meyerhafer, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, eyes have it. We'll move on to new business. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll have presentations from boards and commissions. We'll start with the Board of Commission, including the Chair, Mr. Bill Johnson.
Board of Adjustments.
Board of Adjustment, what was that?
Board of Commissioners.
Board of Commissioners, I'm sorry. Board of Adjustment.
Well, it is a Board of Commissioners. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bill Johnson, and I'm the chairman of the Board of Adjustment. We have 11 members. Hold on one second. There we go. Nine from the city, two from the county, we're full, we have no openings. We rely primarily on the city staff. Elizabeth Mont is with me tonight. She's really the brains of our outfit, I can tell you that. Donald Phillips, Kamala Smith. We meet every fourth Thursday, except in November and December. We listen to appeals, special use permits, we had 22 of those this year, two variances and interpretations of rules, I mean roadmaps and so forth, we had none of those. All of our hearings are public. We advertise a newspaper, put a sign on the property, oops, send out letters. We are quasi-judicial, no ex parte contact, sworn testimony, findings on fact and evidence, no opinions, and appeals will be go to the Superior Court. We had some training this year. The whole board attended today's training from the School of Government, and we had local training conducted by the staff. That's all I have, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Thank you for allowing me to serve.
We appreciate it. Thank you for your service. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we'll have a presentation by the Community Appearance Commission, and we'll have Dr. Wooton, the Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Connolly and councilmembers, let's see, I need to get the presentation up. Excuse me. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening as Chairman of the Greenville Community Appearance Commission. I'd like to take a few minutes to review some background of the CAC and what we've been doing over the past year. So the CAC is tasked with encouraging beautification in the appearance of the community. This may be accomplished by developing ideas, reviewing ordinances and programs, and advising the city council on matters related to community appearance and beautification. Specifically, the main duties of the commission are listed here, to initiate, promote, and assist implementation of programs of beautification and appearance that will affect the city. It's coordinated activities of individuals, agencies, organizations, and departments tasked and concerned with improved appearance of the city, to encourage improved community appearance on public and private property, and in addition to those efforts, to work toward adoption of city ordinances that will help with beautification by working with city departments that have enforcement authority for areas of community appearance. Our commission is composed of 11 members appointed by the city council, and commissioners serve three-year terms. Meetings are held on first Wednesday every other month, starting in February, and currently we have two vacancies. And all meetings are open to the public and encouraged to attend. In addition to myself, we also, current, in our commission, members include Michael Slocum as the vice chair, Kelly Gonzalez, Diane Kulik, Letty Michaleto, Jonathan Taft, Carl Romano, Brian Barnett, and Jeremy Miller. Our interim staff liaison is Shontae Gooby, and we appreciate the help from Dominique Cunningham as well, who's been assisting us this year. And our city council liaison is Councilman Rick Smiley. So this year in 2019, the CAC continued to acknowledge exemplary efforts to enhance the appearance of the city by awarding, actually, five community appearance awards. And these nominees are considered based on the overall appearance of the landscape and the design, maintenance, and variation of vegetation and property and building upkeep. Very quickly, we'd like to highlight the winners from this year who received a community appearance award. Ross Orthodontics on Arlington Drive was given a community appearance award for the curb appeal and landscaping of their property. We also awarded the GK Butterfield Transportation Center an award, which is located on Pitt Street in the Dickinson Avenue corridor because of its outstanding landscaping and many attractive design features, which included some sculptures from local artists as well. Ford &amp; Shep Restaurant was recognized for its unique and attractive design features, which included landscaping as well. It's been a very attractive addition in the Dickinson Avenue corridor. And the Cupola Building, which is located in Uptown District as well, received an award for the appearance of its building and its landscaping. We're also very excited to offer an award to Hannah Jubrin of East Carolina University, who has been instrumental in adding sculptures in the community, including the Transportation Center, but also had, also helped us with these 10th Street sculptures, which are right at the entrance of the new 10th Street Connector project. So the winners of these awards receive a certificate and a letter. They also have yard signs and window signs, which they can display, and we're actively working to increase our publicity of the award winners this year. We're also involved in the Neighborhood Improvement Grant Program, and we continue and encourage improvement of neighborhoods through this program. Official neighborhood associations are eligible to apply for grant funds, and we are able to amount, to award up to $750 per grant. And this year, we have awarded three neighborhood improvement grants as well. First for the Elmhurst Ingled Wood Neighborhood, they were awarded a grant to refurbish the specialty oval neighborhood designation markers, which are atop their street signs. We also awarded Colonial Heights with a grant for landscaping around the two large neighborhood entrance signs, as well as Lakewood Pines for their entrance to their neighborhood, to refurbish that and improve the appearance of their entryway. So in 2020, we do have goals as a commission. We would like to take some steps to promote and recognize beautification in Greenville, and we can improve our process in recognizing community appearance award winners, we think, with involving more of the press and media in recognizing those winners. We're also encouraging neighborhoods to utilize grant funds, which are there for beautification, because we feel like that money could be utilized to improve the neighborhoods. We've also partnered with code enforcement this year and working very closely to first discover problems and also communicate them, so that you can make an informed decision about things, as well as code enforcement being able to address certain issues that are important. So in looking ahead, the CAC has a unique purpose. We feel like it should be preserved and further optimized, and there's a lot of potential that we have in our group. Greenville, we think, is a beautiful, attractive community, and appearance matters to our residents. It's important in how we view life in our community. It's reflected by our commission members, who care deeply about this cause. We think that an attractive community is actually also important for economic development, because companies care about what setting their employees are going to work and live. As a commission, we're eager to explore ways to best serve this important mission in Greenville, especially as our city continues to grow in the years ahead. We hope the city council will continue to support this valuable commission in the years ahead, as it has in the past. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Wooton? Dr. Wooton, excuse me. Thank you for your service to the board, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Manager?
Our final presentation will be the Neighborhood Advisory Board, and we'll call up the Chair, Anne Hamsey.
Thank you very much. Let me get it up here. Okay, good. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to share with city council what the Neighborhood Advisory Board did in 2019 and what plans we have for 2020. Our board was formed in 2008. Our mission is an integral part of the city of Greenville's goal, to have sustainable and vibrant neighborhoods. When we met in June, liaisons from all recognized neighborhoods and homeowners' associations in the city voted for their district's representation on our board. Many of the board members are here tonight. Will the NAB members please rise? These very dedicated members rarely miss a board or committee meeting. In addition, many also attend other meetings in the community that relate to building good neighborhoods. In addition to our monthly meeting, our committees meet to work on the goals outlined in our annual work plan. The three committees are Land Use and City Services, Public Safety, and Community Building. The goals of the Land Use and City Services include addressing flooding and drainage issues, decreasing the amount of litter, and advocating for improved code enforcement compliance. For our first goal, flooding and drainage, we invited specialists to our meetings to educate the board on some key concerns in our district. This partnership between the city and the NAB allows information to get back to our concerned neighborhoods, helping residents evaluate their issues with flooding and drainage. Addressing the second goal, litter, we appreciate Mayor Connolly's efforts for revitalizing the Adopted Street Program. Several neighborhoods, as well as businesses and organizations, are now part of the program. In the area near ECU, Truna has adopted two streets, and Councilman Bell has organized large groups of ECU students to clean up areas near the campus, and also, he and his wife adopted Elm Street near their home. The third goal focused on zoning and development. City Manager Anne Wall, Lieutenant Staton, and other city personnel attended our February meeting and addressed a list of concerns from our neighborhoods. The final goal of the Land Use and City Services Committee dealt with code enforcement. In our meeting with code enforcement, we were disappointed to learn that ECU no longer funds a code enforcement officer for the university neighborhood. The NAB continues to encourage citizens to use City Compass to report code violations. Each year, each year, the NAB, no, I missed a page, thank you. The overall goal of Public Safety Committee was to advocate for infrastructure improvement to address public safety, accessibility, and recreation. The Public Safety Committee worked diligently with city officials to meet these goals. The use of the Nextdoor app and other social media has helped citizens to stay informed. The final committee is the Community Building Committee. In each of these neighborhoods listed on the slide, the NAB made direct efforts with the help of the city and police to form or revitalize neighborhood or homeowner's associations. At the request of the city police, or the Greenville police, the NAB is making a special effort to help neighborhoods in West Greenville to organize their neighborhoods. City members, city council members, we ask that you encourage your own neighborhood to participate in the NAB. Check and make sure that your neighborhood or homeowner's association elects a liaison to our board. Each year, the NAB meets in a district on a rotating basis. This year, we met in November at J.C. Park. Tom Barnett, Director of Planning and Development Services and other city departments, addressed concerns of District III. Publicity for this event brought out a large crowd. We would like to thank all of the city staff that came to the District III meeting. These district meetings are planned around topics of interest to residents in that district. Many neighborhoods find a way to promote fellowship through gathering for an afternoon or evening. Sometimes these gatherings are purely social, but they might also include presentations on a topic of interest by the police, the Greenville Utility, or city personnel. Building relationships in our neighborhood is important. Some neighborhoods prepare welcome bags with useful information about their neighborhoods, as well as information on city services, code enforcement, and City Compass. Neighborhoods gather at meet-and-greet socials, family nights, movies on the lawn, potlucks, barbecues, or they might honor the Fourth of July with an array of flags. Neighborhoods often have Facebook pages, websites, newsletters, or they use the Nextdoor app to keep in touch. So what's next in 2020? The NAB committees have met in the past few weeks to evaluate our 2018-19 work plan. Much of our past year has been to learn more about the issues facing our community. Now we will reset our strategies for 2020. We will continue to encourage neighborhoods and homeowner's associations to elect and send liaisons to our NAB meetings. We share ways to organize a neighborhood and to welcome new residents. We want to encourage more homeowner's associations to send liaisons to the NAB. The NAB has two new initiatives in 2020. The first is to participate in the National Good Neighbor Day on September 28. In 2019, Mayor Connolly issued a proclamation and observation of the day. The NAB hopes to find more ways to have Greenville participate. For example, last year, I created a small postcard that I hand-delivered to the five adjacent neighbors, and I encouraged them, my neighbors, to do likewise. This could snowball into everyone getting to know their neighbors. Another initiative is the Jane Jacobs Walk. City Manager Anne Wall liked the idea of such a walk in Greenville. A Jane Jacobs Walk is a walk through a neighborhood with historical narration about homes, notable residents, businesses, and other cultural features aimed at raising neighborhood awareness and pride. Dr. Misun Hurd, a former NAB member and ECU professor of geography and planning, has one of her ECU classes doing the groundwork for these walks. Tentative dates are April 5 and May 2. The two neighborhoods are in West Greenville and a small section in the Truna neighborhood. In conclusion, the city council recently announced our goals for 2020. Two in particular are shared by the Neighborhood Advisory Board. I bring up these two goals to illustrate how our board touches on both of these important goals. We are here to serve the community and represent the very heart of what makes the place one lives in important, a sense of belonging and being heard. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hamsey. Any questions? Thank you for your service to the committee, and thank you to everyone that's in attendance that serves on the Neighborhood Advisory Board as well. All right. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is an ordinance approving the 2019-2020 Capital Reserve Fund designation. Finance Director Byron Hayes will provide that presentation.
Wait a second. Are you up yet?
You're up, Byron.
All right, this is the This is the 2019-2020 Capital Reserve Fund designation. Statutory authority for the Capital Reserve Fund is found in the North Carolina General Statute 159-18. The recommendation for transfer is to transfer the remaining Convention Center project funds for HVAC and roof replacements for the Convention Center, about $140,000, which brings the detailed designations for the Capital Reserve Fund from just over $5 million to just over $4.9 million. And as you can see, this is a breakdown of the new proposed designations, $4.9 million. Breaking that down, that leaves just over 40% for transportation projects, and most of that is made up of the bill grant funding. And staff recommends approval of the 2019-2020 Capital Reserve designations and adoption of the Capital Reserve Fund ordinance. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Hayes? Motion? If anyone can make a motion.
Move to approve.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Move on to the next item.
While Byron is standing at the podium, the Council will now consider the Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Eight to the 2019-2020 City of Greenville budget, ordinance number 1931, the Special Revenue Grant Fund, ordinance number 11003, and the Capital Projects Fund, ordinance number 17024. Mr. Hayes?
So this is budget amendment number eight. And budget amendment eight includes adjustments to the general fund, Capital Reserve Fund, sanitation, Facilities Improvement Fund, Public Works Capital Projects, Wreck and Parks Capital Projects, Grant Special Revenue Fund, and the Street and Pedestrian Bond Fund. Listing of the amendments, we are appropriating federal forfeiture dollars to cover the expenses related to the items approved by Council in January. Transferring funds from the Wreck and Parks Department to the Recreation and Parks Capital Project Fund to cover expenses associated with the Greenway Art Project and the Artsy Projects. Appropriating funds within Capital Reserve, as we spoke about previously, and move them to the Facilities Improvement Fund for the Convention Center building maintenance projects. Transferring funds from the Street and Pedestrian Bond Fund to the Capitol, to the, excuse me, Public Works Capital Project Fund to cover expenses related to the Safe Routes to Schools Project. Recognizing funding within the Sanitation Fund for the Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant. Transferring funds from Capital Reserve to FIP for those HVAC replacements at the Convention Center. Appropriating occupancy tax within the Public Works Capital Project Fund to cover those additional expenses related to Convention Center upgrades for the roof replacement. Recognizing funding from outside agencies, as well as the city, for the ShotSpotter Project, that is the additional two years remaining on the project. That's in the Grant Special Revenue Fund. And designating occupancy tax reserves to fund the CBA Sports Council for FY 1920, as included in the adopted CBA budget. And as a result of these amendments, the City of Greenville Operating Fund increases to $144.65 million. And staff recommends approval of Budget Ordinance Amendment Eight for the operating funds, the Capital Project Funds, and the Grant Special Revenue Fund. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hayes?
Move to approve.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right. Move on to the review of the February 13, 2020, City Council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. At the meeting, the Council will approve, will consider appointments to Boards and Commissions.
We've got the Historic Preservation Commission, Councilmember Daniels.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint all elected members.
And you'd like to make the motion to appoint him tonight?
Yes.
We just, we appoint him then, and just let us know tonight. Come up.
Thursday night.
Yeah. Let's do it Thursday night.
Thursday night.
I think there's one in particular she wants to make, Wreck and Parks.
Who do you want?
For Recreation and Parks. I want to appoint Sir Ben.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations, Mr. White.
Okay. We have the Human Relations Council, Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
I don't have any recommendations to issue up tonight.
PCRC, Councilmember Will Bell.
Continue, please.
And we've done the Recreation and Parks Commission and Youth Council. Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
Continue.
The Council will consider the following public hearings on Thursday evening. An ordinance to annex the Ford JP2 LLC property involving 24.585 acres located along the eastern, Eastern 14th Street, adjacent to Planners Walk subdivision and Quail Ridge Townhomes. Public hearing number three will be an ordinance to annex Davenport Farms and Emerald Park Phase Four, involving 6.6125 acres located off of Davenport Farm Road and the Emerald Park subdivision at the current terminus of Zircon Drive. Public hearing number four is an ordinance to annex Bobby W. Joiner's property involving 7.794 acres on the northern side of East Fire Tower Road and between Charles Boulevard and East 14th Street. Item number five is an ordinance to annex Taberna Phase Four, involving 13.8318 acres located on the western side of Frog Level Road, just north of the intersection of Davenport Farm Road. The Council will also consider an ordinance requested by Tipton Rentals LLC to rezone 2.514 acres located at Sarah Lane off of East Evans Street from R9 to R6. The Council will consider an ordinance requested by Rocky Russell Development LLC to rezone .1817 acres located at 4020 Laurel Ridge Drive from O to R6A. The Council will consider an ordinance requested by HBL Investments LLC to rezone 4.122 acres located at the termini of Morton Lane and Gordon Drive from R6S to R6. The Council will consider an ordinance requested by John Martin Tap to rezone 2.209 acres located at 3180 Charles Boulevard from RA20 to OR. The Council will consider a resolution to close a portion of Bonner's Lane, a resolution to close a portion of South Alley Street, and a resolution to close a portion of Atlantic Avenue. The City Council will also hold a public hearing and consider the approval of a development agreement between the City of Greenville and Seacoast Communities related to the purchase of Imperial Property from the, for the development of a hotel and market rate housing. And the final public hearing will be a resolution and an economic development agreement for a job creation grant for Grover Gaming Incorporated. Additionally, the Council will have two other items of business. One is the consideration of amending the agreement with Sidewalk Greenville LLC, as well as a license agreement for the Jones Lee House. It's the meeting on Thursday night.
Thank you very much. Now move on to City Manager's Report.
No report.
All right. Move on to comments by Mayor and City Council. Councilmember Meyerhofer.
No comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Smiley?
No comment.
Councilmember Bell?
Got one comment. We completed our first sanitary Sunday of the year yesterday, and I would like to thank a friend and neighbor of mine who took time out of his busy schedule. He has just finished law school, and in the last 15 days of preparation for his bar exam, and he took time out of the library, came and picked me up since I've dislocated my ankle, picked me up, transported me with all the supplies, did the cleanup, and then took me home. And when he's really busy, I know that meant a lot to me, so just wanted to say thank you to Alex Jones.
Councilmember Daniels?
I would like to wish a happy belated birthday to Allison Maynard. Thank you for all that you do for us. And, it was February 19.
I do this every time, I'm sorry. Happy birthday, Ann. Happy belated birthday. February is Black History Month. I like to encourage everyone to attend the numerous programs that are going on throughout the city, and let's just get to know each other and have a good time, and see you everybody Thursday.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
I have two items. I want to thank code enforcement for their increasing work on abandoned houses, because they are certainly a problem in our communities. And there was, there's a house on the street that I live on that some vagrants moved in on, I guess about last week, early part of last week. But thanks to Michael Cowan and me worrying about the code enforcement person that was supposed to go to the house, because you never know what happens, and especially if it's a woman that goes. And so, I'm concerned about the code enforcement officers, that they don't have any type, you know, they go to these abandoned structures, and you never know who they're going to find in there. And also, even when they go to people to tell them that they have a case on their property, I know that they find a lot of people that are not really nice to them. And, and so, my concern is, is what do we do for the safety of code enforcement officers? Because they have no gun, no mace, no nothing, but they have to approach these people all the time. So be thinking about what we can do, so that we can feel better about our code enforcement officers when they go to these particular places that are not good places, because it takes a lot of guts for three people to just go into an abandoned house that's been abandoned probably about 20 years, and right on my street, and move in there. And if my neighbor had not called me, we would not have known she saw a couple of them sitting on the front porch, and they had just taken over the house. Had Carison heater in there, everything, no electricity, nothing. So when they approached them the next day, well, one ran, one got arrested, and the other one was instructed to leave the house, right on, get everything they had to leave the house. But it is very, very dangerous, because you don't know what these people, why are they not living in housing? What is the reason why they have to move into vacant houses? They may have criminal records, which one of them did. And so, it's very, very scary to me, and I kept Michael up till about nine o'clock, and I had to pass his bedtime, till I heard that the code enforcement officer had gotten home safely. And I want to thank the Police Department also for working with the code enforcement. And Michael had them check the house off and on, so that was a relief for me that the code enforcement officer was safe. But my concern is, we need to come up with something, because when these code enforcement officers go up there, they just got on a shirt that says "code enforcement." So, I mean, they have no mace, they have no nothing to defend themselves, should one of those people decide that they're going to do something to one of the code enforcement people. So, you know, and times are getting worse, and to have that happen, to worry about a code enforcement all night, until I heard from her, she finally called me and said she had to take her daughter to the hospital, but I know she always will return my calls immediately, but she didn't, she didn't let me know that she'd been by or anything. But it was really scary for me, because I just knew something had happened to her. And we've got a lot of female code enforcement officers, and a lot of males, that, you know, if somebody can overpower them with a gun or anything. So I'm concerned about them, and I'd like for us to look into what we need to do to help code enforcement officers be safe on their jobs.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover, we certainly appreciate your concern for our employees. We certainly do, and I'm happy to talk to city staff to talk about what, what we can do to make sure that we keep our employees safe, because that's one of our most important pro, our most important goals, is to keep everybody safe.
Right, right. Thank you. On Murder Street, there's a little short street, on Murder Street, that's on the right side of the other part of Murder Avenue. And the road, it's right behind the ballpark. That road has been, gotten neglected for years and years and years. You're just riding on mud now, very little concrete. You just, every time you go through there, you're on mud instead of concrete, because the road is so bad. And it's just a little short road, so I can't understand why we can't do something about it.
Is this a section that is directly behind the ballpark?
Yes.
Okay. I thought we actually, I thought we.
It's on the list.
It's on the list? Okay.
How long is it going to be before they fix it?
We'll, we'll look up, look that up.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
All right. I'll make this quick. February is a very busy month for me for birthdays. First, I had a, I celebrated on February 4, my mother-in-law, it's her birthday, so happy birthday to my mother-in-law. February 5, our esteemed city manager, she turned something, something. Happy birthday to our city manager, Ann Wall. And then today is my mother's birthday. So she's celebrating, happy birthday, Mom. I'm thinking of you a thousand miles away, so I hope you have a great day today.
I'm sure she's tuned in, too.
I'm sure. She can watch the replay.
Are you going to sing to her?
No. We had enough singing tonight. Also, I want to say thank you to the veterans that showed up today. We really appreciate the fact that they took time out of their, their schedule to come out here and show support for other veterans, not only just here in Greenville, but all of eastern North Carolina, and, like they said, multiple states that come here to be able to get the services that they need for their claims. So thank you to all of our veterans that are the heroes of our world. So with that, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?